Can the picture show the stuff still there?
Is that Washoe Lake filled up?
No, that's Marlette.
That's Marlette, okay.
All right, what's it, Mr. Chair?
Okay, great. All right, one more time. Commissioner Gilman, you good to go?
Great.
Commissioner, Vice Chairman Mitchell, you good to go?
I'm good, thank you.
All right. Deputy DA Brown, you good to go?
I'm ready to go, good morning.
All right, good morning. County Manager? Jim, you're good? Jim?
Yeah.
Thank you. Good morning, everyone. Sorry for a bit of a late start here. It is 10:05 a.m. March 4th, 2025, there is a quorum present by Sherman Mitchell via Zoom in Washington, D.C. And Commissioner Gilman and myself are in the courtroom. We're gonna go ahead and call this meeting to order. If you can all jo- excuse me. Item number two is to convene as the Story County Board of County Commissioners, bringing us to item number three, which is the Pledge of Allegiance. If you can all join me for that, I would appreciate it.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, on to item number four. This is public comment. Public comment is welcome at the beginning and end of each meeting. These comments should be limited to matters not on today's calendar agenda. Public comment is again welcomed after each item on the agenda, and those comments should be limited to the agendized topic. With that said, is there any public comment? And as a reminder, limited to three minutes per individual. Morning, Lee.
At last month's meeting.
Lee, your name for the record.
Oh, sorry. Lee Starrett for the record. At last month's meeting of the Carson Water Sub Conservancy Board, we voted to approve an agreement with J.E. Fuller for the Gold Canyon Area Drainage Master Plan, similar to the plan for Virginia City and Six Mile Canyon, which was done in nineteen, or 2023. Funding for this study will be paid through the grant from FEMA. The study will include the area from the Divide down through Story and Lion Counties. Early in the study, there'll be a community meeting for local residents, and other meetings will be held during the study. It's scheduled to be completed in 2026, and Kathy will be the contact for Story County.
Thank you, Lee. Is there any other public comment in the courtroom today? All right, not seeing any. We're gonna move right along to item number five, which is discussion for possible action. Consideration and possible approval of the agenda for the March 4th, 2025 meeting. County Manager Osborne, are there any changes to today's agenda?
There's one today. The Fire District has asked that we remove item number 26 from the Fire District Commission Agenda item today.
And it's not going to be postponed to another meeting, or?
I was asked just to remove it at this point, so if they do put it on another meeting, it would be reset just fine.
Okay, thank you. All right. Commissioner Gilman, do you have any questions or comments about today's agenda, sir?
No, thank you.
All right, Vice Chairman?
I'm good, thank you.
Is there any public comment regarding the agenda and the items on it today? Not seeing any, we're gonna... Vice Chairman Mitchell, you prepared to make a motion?
I'd like to remove to approve today's agenda with the number of change from being item number 26.
A second.
All right, there's a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously. Onto item number six. This is discussion for possible action. Consideration and possible approval of the minutes from the February 4th, 2025 meeting. Commissioner Gilman, questions or comments about those minutes?
None, thank you.
All right, Vice Chairman?
I'm good, thank you.
Is there any public comment regarding those minutes? Not seeing any. Vice Chairman, you prepared to make a motion?
I would approve the minutes from our February 4th, 2025 meeting as presented.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously. Onto item number seven is today's consent agenda. Commissioner Gilman, questions or comments about the consent agenda?
None, thank you.
Vice Chairman?
Uh, no, thanks.
Is there any public comment regarding the consent agenda? Not seeing any. Vice Chairman, you prepared to make a motion?
Yeah, I move to approve today's consent agenda, ask for them.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously. Onto item number eight. This is discussion only, no action, no public comment will be taken. These are committee and staff reports. And we're gonna kick things off with the Sheriff's Office. Anybody here on their behalf? Okay, moving right along. How about the Fire Protection District?
Good morning, Commissioners. Jim Morgan, Assistant Fire Chief for the record. Just one thing to report on today. We just went through ESCO, and we've closed on the building at 300 Italy, which will be Station 75, and we'll be moving forward with that.
Thank you for that. Commissioner Gilman, any questions or comments?
Uh, none, thank you.
All right, Vice Chairman?
Uh, no, thank you.
All right, great news. Thank you for the update. Moving right along to Public Works.
Nothing, David, Public Works, sir.
All right, thank you, Mike. How about project, or Operations and Projects Coordinator?
Thank you, Mrs. Chairman. Mike Northen, Operations Projects Coordinator. Start off with the Lockwood Senior Center. The roof is now complete. Storm drains and underground electrical are nearing completion. NB Energy is gonna be setting the transformer in the next couple of weeks. We do have a couple of issues that will be coming before the board at the next meeting relating to some design oversights and some proposed corrective action, probably on the meeting of the 18th. Number two, backup generator has arrived for 800 South C Street, the Bullion Building. Working with the contractor and coordinating with the building tenants to schedule the outage that's gonna be required for the transfer switch installation. Also at 800 South C, Coons Construction will be doing some site improvements, including widening the sidewalk for ADA access. This is gonna affect parking at the building, so I'm coordinating with Justice Court primarily, trying to avoid their busiest times and to provide some alternate parking areas for people coming to pay tickets or whatever court business. Number four, the TRI restroom remodel is in design. We have a good concept design that is now in design development. This effort will result in two modernized public restrooms, and also provide a utility room, workspace for the facilities workers. Number five, Mark Twain Community Center Phase One Vehicle Storage Building, also in design. We did pare the building down a little bit to better suit the immediate use of the building as a storage facility for fire apparatus. We did build in some features that will enable us to TI that building to a Public Works facility as that opportunity arises. Lastly, I've been working with the USDA and some other federal funding sources with the help of Ms. Sturts, our grants manager, to gather their requirements for content and format for the RFQs for the proposed new jail facility in Virginia City and the TRI substation tenant improvement and the Fire Station 71 expansion. And with that, I'd be happy to take any questions.
Thanks for that update, Mike. Commissioner Gilman, do you have any questions or comments?
None, thank you.
All right, Vice Chairman?
I'm good, thank you.
All right, appreciate the updates, Mike.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. How about our Planning Department?
Uh, nothing right now.
Admin Officer?
Good morning, and Lisa, myself for the record. We hosted our legislation dinner on the 18th of February, and I just wanted to say thank you to Bonanza and La Soul, if they're listening. They were very accommodating with the last-minute date change. Our facilities conditions report should be in within the next couple of weeks. We have some more interviews that are gonna be scheduled with personnel tomorrow and on Thursday. And I'm working on a current language access plan that was, basically, that was, came about from the last legislative session, so getting that ready, and hopefully we'll have that ready for the Board of Commissioners within the next couple of weeks or so. Any questions?
Thank you, Lisa. Commissioner Gilman, do you have any questions or comments for Lisa?
None, thank you.
Vice Chairman?
Um, I don't have any questions. I just was, I mentioned this, I think, I don't know if you heard, but the suggestion from the legislature was if you need any help with that language plan, was to contact the Office of the Americans of the State.
They're on my list. Thank you so much.
Great. Thank you for that update, Lisa. How about Emergency Management?
Good morning, Stacy York on behalf of Adam Wilson for Emergency Management. He is currently speaking at the Governor's Mansion today in Carson for the Carson Water Sub Conservancy District's annual summit. The Public Safety Town Hall last week was well-attended. There was great discussions with the citizens. He can, he would like to continue hosting those around the communities in the future. Emergency management from the Quad Counties met with N.D. district leadership last week on enhancing coordination during emergencies between the counties and the state on road closures and resource sharing. And they were also, emergency management from the Quad Counties and the state will meet with NB Energy's emergency management team. They're gonna enhance coordination during emergencies and have discussions regarding the public safety outage impacts at the local levels. And that is it for Adam.
Thank you, Stacy. Commissioner Gilman, do you have any questions or comments?
None, thank you.
All right, Vice Chairman?
I'm good, thank you.
All right, appreciate you coming, Stacy, thanks. Moving right along to the VCTC.
Morning, Commissioners. Todd Tuttle, Director of Tourism for the record. Upcoming Oyster Fry Saturday, March 15th, 10 o'clock to 4 p.m. We've got quite a number of television and radio interviews coming up the next week. We will have live feeds on Friday morning, starting at 5 a.m. Anybody that would like to come and participate in that would be great. We'll be meeting with some of the chefs and trying some of the samples, so double whammy on Friday morning if you'd like to be there. C Street will be closed from Union South to Taylor, and that will be the main area that the Oyster Fry will be held in. Union from C Street up to B Street will be limited for access, mainly for pedestrians to be able to come down from the parking to get down into that area. Other than that, Union will be eastbound will be fine. Taylor Street will be open all the way through, so it'll just be there in the center part of town that we'll have our cooks and chefs and everybody set up there. Should be noted that we've got 14 cooks participating this year. It's one of the larger years for the number of cooks that'll be there. And we also have 10 celebrity judges that will be here to be able to do part of that judging, so we're excited about it. Ticket sales are extremely strong. They're not as strong as they were last year, which we're happy that it's kind of coming in a little smoother than last year. Last year, we were overwhelmed and dated on a certain occasion. So we're looking for the numbers just for some information. We're a little above 300. For advanced ticket sales, last year we were about 325 at this point. So also, on that weekend, on Saturday, there is a comedy act at Piper's Opera House, which will feature Jen Murphy. She's an Irish comedian. It'll start at 6:30. And don't forget, we'll also have the parade, the St. Patrick's Day Parade, that starts at 12 o'clock. It'll be on C Street. Everybody will be lining up there on Flowery by the Blue House and then proceeding down through. So they should be right in the middle of town, right as the siren goes off, and the timing should be fantastic. And also, the St. Patrick, or St. Patty Made Me Do It Saloon Crawl will be happening at the same time. So it's a great weekend as we start our festive season. Other things coming up, the Father Daughter Day and Dance, Saturday, April 12th, 11 o'clock to 4:30. There's three dances, 12:30, 2 o'clock, and 3:30. They are pretty much sold out. This has become one of our signature events, and people sign up early to get involved with it. So we're excited about that. The annual Grand Prix will be Saturday and Sunday, April 26th and 27th, which should be pretty exciting. Chili on the Comstock, Saturday, May 17th and 18th, 10 o'clock to 4 o'clock, along with the Fast Car Rally, which will be held on that same weekend. The Memorial Celebration of Heroes Parade, Saturday, May 25th, is coming up also, so there's a lot of excitement in that. And one last thing is the Mix and Mingle, which will be next Tuesday at Piper's Opera House at 6 o'clock. There we'll be talking about the dark skies. We'll be talking about the Chamber of Commerce and its advancement and how it goes, plus some of the overall views of the events that are coming up. That's my report. I'm open to any questions.
Thank you for that report, Todd. Commissioner Gilman, do you have any questions or comments for Todd?
None, thank you.
Vice Chairman?
I'm good, thank you.
Great. Thank you again, Todd. Appreciate that.
Thank you.
How about the Controller's Office?
Nothing at this time, thank you.
Okay. How about Health and Community Services?
Good morning again. Stacy York for the record. Next Wednesday, March 12th, from 10 a.m. to 2 p.m., we'll be doing Battle of the Badges Blood Drive. Come donate blood, and you choose whether you want sheriff or fire, and they compete for a little trophy. You can vote for my department, too, but they don't make me a trophy. I try to beat them every year. We also hired our community health workers. We have them both started. They are getting their certifications out doing meet and greets, and we're getting them started on the mental health issues that we're seeing in the county. With that, do we have any questions?
Thank you, Stacy. Commissioner Gilman, do you have any questions or comments for Stacy?
None at this time, thank you.
Vice Chairman?
No, thank you.
All right, appreciate the update. How about the Recorder's Office?
Nothing today, thank you.
All right. How about our PR Officer?
Nothing today, just their presentation there.
Okay. Lee Starrett, anything you wanted to add?
No, thank you.
Okay. How about the DA's Office?
Hi, good morning. Your own day today.
All right. County Manager's Office?
Austin Osborne for a record, thank you. Just give you an update on Piper's Opera House RFQ. At this point, the respondent in the county, under the circumstances of substantial work that we're finding that needs to be done with some structural retrofits to the building, as well as federal grant conditions right now, and a few other things that are going on, we mutually agree to put a pause on everything at this time. And we'll go ahead and communicate with the VCTC. They can take the brakes off and booking the building up for some of their events, and we'll probably spend the next 12 months or so getting those things situated and straightened out, and then we'll likely go back out to an RFQ at that time. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Austin. Commissioner Gilman, do you have any questions or comments?
None, thank you.
All right, Vice Chairman?
I'm good, thanks.
Okay, thank you, Austin. Clerk Treasurer's Office? Any updates?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, Jim Hindle, Clerk and Treasurer. Just want to remind everybody that as they come to the podium, or for you Commissioners as well, County Manager, please speak into the microphones. Given the new stream, it's a little lighter as it's going through all our transition stages to get it to the internet, and it comes out a little light, so if you can speak clearly and directly into the mic, it helps the people on the streaming end hear what's going on. The vehicle registration and titling service is going to open next Tuesday officially. Hours will be Tuesday, Wednesday, and Thursday, 9 a.m. to noon, and then 1 p.m. till 3. And so for those who have been waiting for us to get our DMV vehicle registration back online, it is finally happening, and I appreciate everybody's patience. I know it's been a hardship for our residents, given the registrat- or the reservation systems in both Carson and Reno, having the ability to come up and get simple tags and titling done will be a great benefit. So if there are some who need something done this week, Tuesday, today, Wednesday, and Thursday, we can accommodate, but please bear with us as we're trying to make sure everything's working, but we are looking for some guinea pigs, if anybody would like to do that. Additionally, we had property taxes due yesterday for the fourth and final installment. Property taxes have been coming in as planned. We'll let the comptroller let us know where we are on that in the next report, but I believe we should be doing strong. From here to the balance of the fiscal year, we'll be working with those property owners who are delinquent, trying to get people caught up, and we'll be working through that process as we go through April, May, so that we can close the rolls with the Assessor in June and issue new property tax bills end of June, beginning of July. One thing I would like to highlight for everybody's understanding, and I don't mean to be throwing anybody under the bus here, but the U.S. mail has not been performing well. And so if you are paying property taxes or paying any bill through the mail, I encourage you, if you live in the Highlands, if you live in Lockwood, Dayton, not so much, but definitely Dayton, we've seen some delays. Anything that's not going through the Virginia City Post Office originating is taking weeks to get to us. Sometimes it's quick, but we're seeing a lot of delays. So just people be aware of that. We don't want the taxpayer or others to get caught in communicating with us, but the U.S. mail is not doing things very quickly right now as it has to go through Reno, and just be aware.
Thank you, Jim.
Maybe Commissioner Mitchell can do something about that now that he's in DC right now. Head over to the post office, see what you can clear up.
No pressure. Hey, Jim, couple of questions?
Yeah.
Can you just recap the times? No, it's Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, open at 9, you said, till when?
9 until noon.
Okay.
And then 1 p.m. until 3 p.m.
And this is Story County residents only?
This is Story County residents only.
Okay. And then, I was so enamored with the DMV thing, I forgot my second question, but... That's it. I'll go to Commissioner Gilman, do you have anything?
Uh, I don't know if you can answer this right now, but a lot of times I'm receiving things DMV-wise with my Story County address, but it says Washoe County on that. Is that something that DMV can fix up here? If you bring paperwork in, or how does that work?
Let me follow up on that and find out. We, I think we should be able to do that, but I understand the frustration that they put Washoe County. We do, as you know, automatic voter registration through the DMV. A lot of times either puts people on the north end of the county into Washoe, or they're putting some of our people in Washoe that are on Geiger grade into Story, and so we do have to watch that with zip codes. But you have a McCarran zip code, do you not?
Yes.
Yeah, so it should be very straightforward. So we, let me look into that and get back to you, and I'll get back. We'll possibly work with Julia and clarify that through a social media post, too, if we can fix that.
Great, thank you. Thank you. Vice Chairman, do you have anything?
Uh, I don't have anything. Just telling you, don't hold your breath. Things are really wild here, changing by the day, so...
All right, so no zip code? No.
We, we spoke about it with Senator Rosenstaff and Andy's office about it as well.
Thank you. Oh, Jim, I remembered. So as far as the paying of the taxes, do you recommend folks just come in and pay that in person?
If they're, the ability to do that, yes. We encourage people to come in and pay in person. I know that for some people, it's not the optimal solution, but if you also pay online with credit card, or you can pay by e-check online for a minimum flat $3 charge for e-check. If you pay by credit card, it's a 2.45% processing fee. But if you pay by e-check, that $3 charge is a lot less than a late penalty.
Okay, sounds good. And that does it for my question, so thank you very much. Appreciate it. All right, is there anybody that has an update that I forgot to call on today? Great. Thank you again to everybody for those updates and that information. We are going to go on to item number nine, which is Board Comments. Start off to my left. Commissioner Gilman, do you have anything for us today?
Uh, I do not, thank you.
All right, thank you. Vice Chairman?
No, thank you.
All right. I do. I would like to ask, so we have a moment of silence for a Highlands resident that passed away the other day, Alan Balliket. For those that know, his wife was a teacher at the school for a little bit. She passed away several years back. Alan's been a resident of the Highlands, I believe, at least 20 years, and has passed away. So if we could just have a moment of silence for Alan, I would appreciate that. Thank you. All right, moving along to item number 10 is to recess to convene as the Story County Highway Board. We do have a 10:30 public hearing, and we are just on the button, so I ask that we all just hang tight, and at 10:30, I'll open the public hearing. All right, it is 10:30, and we're gonna be at item number 11, which is the public hearing. So let it be noted, the public hearing is open. If there's any public comment from anyone in the courtroom, now would be your time. Call one more time. Is there any public comment regarding this public hearing? All right. Brian, is this good enough? It's 10:30 on the button. Are we okay if we close it out? You're on mute.
I'll send a click, especially my spacebar, and, yeah, sure, okay, proceed.
All right, thank you, Brian. Vice Chairman, you prepared to make a motion to close this public hearing?
Yes, I'd be happy to. Uh, just thinking to get my paperwork there. All right, I move to close the public hearing on the settled resolutions, 25-757, 25-758, 25-759, 25-760, 25-761, and 25-762.
A second.
All right, there's a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously. Thank you. Moving right along to item number 12. This is discussion for possible action. Consideration and possible approval of Resolution 25-757 proposing the identification of Story County Road, number 910100, commonly known as unnamed. Total road segment length, 3,741 feet. Overall average disturbed width, approximately 8 feet. Kathy?
Thank you. So this is one of our RS2477 roads that's in the program. This one and all the ones that are, that will be coming up next are all located south of the Virginia City Highlands, north of the Virginia City Platted Townsite and Six Mile Canyon, so just kind of this swath of land that's through here. So what we're doing with these are recognizing the portions of these prop- or these roadways that are on public land. So a couple of these, and this one included that we're talking about right now, does show that it goes on to some private property. The resolution's not recognizing that at this time. We do have documentation, so in the future, if we ever needed it, we could come back and do that. But this is a proposal just to do the resolution on public land.
All right, thank you, Kathy. Commissioner Gilman, do you have any questions or comments?
Uh, I do. Kathy, if these are approved in the meeting today, are they posted anywhere for public to see that they are roads that they can use?
At this time, not all of these are. I think they're, most of these are pretty gen- pretty well-known, the ones that we're talking about today. We, these roads are, even though we're identifying these as public, they're kind of motorized, that they're owned and used. They're not maintained by the county necessarily for roadway, but that access is there for the public.
And will that affect any of the private ownership, private property?
At this time, no, we're not proposing to do that on private property. If something, the situation will stay the same as it goes across private property. If in the future there becomes an issue with ac- public access on that, we do have that research and documentation that we could go through that process of identifying that as public access. We've just chosen right now to focus on the ones that are on the public land, so that, like this one right here is on land that's controlled by the Bureau of Land Management. What would happen is if the Bureau of Land Management had a project or wanted to do something and wanted to block access, by us recognizing these on our maps and our resolutions, they can't just go and close those things. They have... they can't just go and close those things, they have, there's other processes that they would need to follow to limit public access or provide something that's equivalent, or there's a lot of different options. But this is just recognizing that they can't go in and close these off.
Okay.
That's the purpose of what these are.
Thank you. Commissioner Gilman, Vice Chairman, do you have any questions?
I don't have any questions, thank you.
Okay, is there any public comment regarding this item? Not seeing any. Vice Chairman, you prepared to make a motion?
In accordance with the recommendation by staff, I, Commissioner Mitchell, move to adopt Resolution 25-757, identifying Story County Road Number 910100, commonly known as unnamed. Total road segment length in horizontal distance of 3,741 feet, 1.71 miles. Overall average disturbed width, approximately eight feet as a minor county road. The effect of identifying the road as a minor county road is to identify it as a public road available for public use, but not maintained by Story County. It must be used by motorists at their own risk.
Second. There's a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously. Thank you. On to item number 13, this is discussion for possible action. Consideration and possible approval of Resolution 25-758, proposing the identification of Story County Road Number 910320, commonly known as cemetery. Total road segment length, road segment length is 3,172 feet. Kathy?
Thank you again. So this is a similar situation. This actual roadway is just below Geiger grade and kind of follows how the grade, grade goes. It did have a name in the old research, although this has nothing to do with our existing cemetery piece. It probably at one time led to the cemetery where people were using this prior to Geiger grade being developed as it is. So staff is recommending approval of the resolution. Or adoption of the resolution.
All right, thank you, Kathy. Commissioner Gilman, do you have any questions or comments?
None, thank you.
Vice Chairman?
I'm good, thanks.
All right, is there any public comment regarding this agenda item? Not seeing any. Vice Chairman, you prepared to make a motion?
I am. In accordance with the recommendation by staff, I, Commissioner Mitchell, move to adopt Resolution 25-758, identifying Story County Road Number 910320, commonly known as cemetery. Total road segment length in horizontal distance of 3,172 feet, 1.6 miles. The average disturbed width, approximately 12 feet as a minor county road. The effect of identifying the road as a minor county road is to identify it as a public road available for public use, but not maintained by Story County, it must be used by motorists at their own risk.
Second. There's a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously. On to item number 14, discussion for possible action. Consideration and possible approval of Resolution Number 25-759, proposing the identification of Story County Road Number 910325, commonly known as unnamed road. Total road segment length is 3,042 feet. Kathy?
Thank you. So Kathy Campbell for the record. This is a roadway that is located north of the Virginia City Cemetery area, south of the Highlands area, pretty close to Six, Seven Mile Canyon. Again, staff is recommending adoption of the resolution.
Thank you, Kathy. Commissioner Gilman, do you have any questions or comments?
None, thank you.
Vice Chairman?
I'm good, thanks.
About public comment? Not seeing any. Vice Chairman, you prepared to make a motion?
Yes, sir. In accordance with the recommendation by staff, I, Commissioner Mitchell, move to adopt Resolution 25-759, identifying Story County Road Number 910325, commonly known as unnamed road. Total road segment length in horizontal distance of 3,042 feet, 1.58 miles. Overall average disturbed width, approximately 14 feet as a minor county road. The effect of identifying the road as a minor county road is to identify it as a public road available for public use, but not maintained by Story County. It must be used by motorists at their own risk.
All second. There's a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously. On to item number 15, this is discussion for possible action. Consideration and possible approval of Resolution Number 25-760, proposing identification, Story County Road Number 910470, commonly known as unnamed road. Total road segment length is 4,744 feet. Kathy?
Thank you. So this roadway segment is located further down Six Mile Canyon, between the Highlands and Six Mile Canyon Road, closer to Mark Twain than, than the Virginia City Townsite. Staff is recommending adoption of the resolution.
Thank you, Kathy. Commissioner Gilman, questions or comments?
None, thank you.
Vice Chairman?
I'm good, thanks.
About public comment? Not seeing any. Vice Chairman, you prepared to make a motion?
Yes, in accordance with the recommendation by staff, I, Commissioner Mitchell, move to adopt Resolution 25-760, identifying Story County Road Number 910470, commonly known as unnamed road. Total road segment length in horizontal distance of 4,744 feet, 1.19 miles. Overall average disturbed width, approximately eight feet as a minor county road. The effect of identifying the road as a minor county road is to identify it as a public road available for public use, but not maintained by Story County. It must be used by motorists at their own risk.
Second. There's a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously. On to item number 16, which is consider, discussion for possible action. Consideration and possible approval of Resolution Number 25-761, proposing the identification of Story County Road Number 911345, commonly known as unnamed road. Total road segment length is 1,745 feet. Kathy?
Thank you. So Kathy Campbell for the record. So this one again is close to Geiger grade, kind of below downhill from there, north of the Virginia City Platt and south of the Highlands neighborhood. So staff is recommending adoption of the resolution.
All right, thank you, Kathy. Commissioner Gilman, questions or comments?
None, thank you.
Vice Chairman?
I'm good, thanks.
Is there any public comment? Not seeing any. Vice Chairman, you prepared to make a motion?
Yeah, in accordance with the recommendation by staff, I, Commissioner Mitchell, move to adopt Resolution 25-761, identifying Story County Road Number 911345, commonly known as unnamed road. Total road segment length in horizontal distance of 1,745 feet, 1.3 miles. Overall average disturbed width, approximately 12 feet as a minor county road. The effect of identifying the road as a minor county road is to identify it as a public road available for public use, but not maintained by Story County. It must be used by motorists at their own risk.
All second. There's a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously. On to item number 17, this is discussion for possible action. Consideration and possible approval of Resolution Number 25-762, proposing the identification of Story County Road Number 920020, commonly known as Hillside Road. Total road segment length is 3,233 feet. Kathy?
Thank you. So this is actually, this one has a name, and I think maybe many are more familiar with this one, for Hillside Road. The segment that was studied by our researcher includes both the public and the private land, and as the resolution is identifying, we're only recognizing the portion on the public land. So on that exhibit, you'll see a green line and a yellow line. So the description of the length and the width are applicable to the whole thing, but we're just, the resolution is only doing the yellow line at this time. Probably to expand on that a little bit, the purpose that we found is once we get onto private land, we end up having to work with the private property owner, which is not an issue, but not everybody is excited to see that they have a public land, public road on their land. A few of these that have come, or one of them I'm particularly familiar with that has come up in the past, it ended up in the legal system. And so when we were doing this whole RS2477 program, we were trying to do the, the public land things first, which we have more control over. And then as these private pieces come in, or things are proposed to change, we'll deal with those on a case-by-case basis. So that's why the difference for those. So for this one, recognizing the portion of this segment that's on public land, staff is recommending adoption of the resolution.
Great, thank you, Kathy. Commissioner Gilman, questions or comments?
None, thank you.
All right, Vice Chairman?
I'm good, thank you.
About public comment? Too many public comment today. Not seeing any. Vice Chairman, you prepared to make a motion?
Yeah, in accordance with the recommendation by staff, I, Commissioner Mitchell, move to adopt Resolution 25-762, identifying Story County Road Number 920020, commonly known as Hillside Road. Total road segment length in horizontal distance, 3,233 feet, 1.61 miles. Overall average disturbed width, approximately 14 feet as a minor county road. The effect of identifying the road as a minor county road is to identify it as a public road available for public use, but not maintained by Story County. It must be used by motorists at their own risk.
Second. There's a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously.
I just, if I could just add very quickly that for, when we're getting close to completing all these segments that are left on public land, we're kind of getting towards the end of that, we do have a map that shows where all these are, and we'll be identifying which ones we're done with the resolution and which ones we still have research on. So that'll be made available, and we'll present that when we, when we finish up with the rest of these stuff.
Great.
Thank you.
Thank you, Kathy. All right, moving right along to item number 18, this is discussion only, no action, no public comment will be taken. This is a report of Public Works Department regarding roads and highways throughout Story
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mike Northen, Operations Projects Coordinator, reporting for Public Works Director, Where's Vicki? Item one, the 2025 Road Rehab Project, including B Street and Union Street Road and drainage, is set to go to bid on March 11th. Item two is they are engaged in some shoulder improvement and some spot repairs on filling potholes throughout the county. And with that, I'd be happy to take any questions back to the director.
Thank you, Mike. Commissioner Gilman, do you have any questions or comments on the update?
None, thank you, Mike.
All right. Vice Chairman, any questions on the update?
No, thank you.
All right, thanks again, Mike, appreciate it.
Thanks, sir.
On to item number 19, recess to reconvene as the Story County Board of County Commissioners, bringing this item number 20, which is discussion for possible action. Consideration and possible approval of special use permit, 2025-014. The applicant requests a special use permit to operate an outdoor establishment. The outdoor venue is associated with the Silverland Inn and will include a variety of scheduled uses and special events. Property is located at 100 Northeast, uh, North East Street, Virginia City, Nevada. APN number 001-152-04, 001-154-03, and 001-151-02. Kathy?
Right, thank you. Kathy Campbell for the record. So this is a request for a special use permit for a special events venue. It requires the SUP because of the outdoor aspect of the, the land use. The property is located at the Silverland Inn and, which extends along East Street between Union and Mill Streets. The applicants are proposing a variety of outdoor activities, and Exhibit A had a list of all the brainstormed activities that the applicant could think of. When we first met with her, talking about the different things that she wanted to do, and we told her, like, brainstorm everything you could think of, it doesn't necessarily mean that everything in this Exhibit A will occur. We were just trying to encompass as many items as we could, so we didn't have to come back if something came up that was just a little bit different and we'd have to revisit the SUP. It doesn't, and again, it doesn't mean that all these things will occur, it doesn't mean all these things will happen in the same year, you know, or they would be a regular occurrence, it's just something that, that we're putting out there for, these are the types of things that we're wanting to be approved. Staff is supportive of the proposed concept. This area is within the CR zoning and is also within the downtown district where these types of activity should be, be located. The Planning Commission did hear this at their February 20th meeting. We discussed the project, and Todd Tuttle with the VCTC also had, had spoken about the project at that time. There were a couple edits that we had to some of the conditions of approval that we added at the Planning Commission, and those are already incorporated into the conditions as they're written for your staff report. We did receive one phone call from an adjacent property owner. They had gone ahead and talked to the applicant and had then called us to tell us that they were okay with the project and didn't have any opposition to that. The Planning Commission at their meeting voted unanimously, six to one, that we had one person absent to recommend approval. So I can answer any questions you might have. The applicant is also here if you have any questions for her.
Great. Thank you, Kathy. Before I ask the Commissioners if there are any questions, does the applicant have anything they'd like to add at this time? All right, thank you, Carol. Commissioner Gilman, do you have any questions or comments about this item?
None, thank you.
All right, Vice Chairman?
I don't have any questions, thank you.
All right, is there any public comment? Not seeing any. Vice Chairman, actually Kathy, you have findings, right?
Yes, so for the findings, a fact for a motion of approval. This approval is for special use permit 2025-014 to operate an outdoor establishment. The outdoor venue is associated with the Silverland Inn and will include a variety of scheduled uses and special use, of special events. Property is located at 100 Northeast Street, Virginia City, Nevada. Assessors parcel number APN 001-152-04, 001-154-03, and 001-151-02. The proposed project complies with the general purpose, goals, objectives, and standards of the County Master Plan. This title and any other plan, program, map, or ordinance adopted are under consideration pursuant to an official notice by the county. As condition, the proposal location, size, height, operations, and other significant features will be compatible with and will not cause substantial negative impact on adjacent land uses, or will perform a function or provide a service that is essential to the surrounding land uses, community, and neighborhood. As condition, the proposed project is not expected to result in no substantial or undue adverse effect on adjacent property, the character of the neighborhood, traffic conditions, parking, public improvements, public sites, or right-of-way, or other matters affecting the public health, safety, and general welfare, either as they now exist or as they may in the future be developed. As a result of the implementation of the provisions and policies of the County Master Plan, this title and any other plans, program, map, or ordinance adopted are under consideration pursuant to an official notice by the county or other governmental agency having jurisdiction to guide growth and development. The proposed use and the proposed area will be adequately served by and will impose no undue burden on any of the improvements, facilities, utilities, or services provided by the county or other governmental agency having jurisdiction in the county. The special use permit conforms to the 2024 Story County Master Plan for the Virginia City planning area in which the subject property is located. A discussion supporting this finding is provided in Section 2. C of the staff report, and the contents thereof are cited in an approval of the special use permit. The conditions under the special use permit do not conflict with the minimum requirements in Story County Code, Section 17.03.150 Special Use Permit, and Section 17.30 CR Commercial Residential Zone. Thank you.
Thank you, Kathy. Vice Chairman, you prepared to make a motion?
Yes, in accordance with the recommendation by staff, the findings are fact under Section 3 of this report, and as read into the record by county staff and other findings deemed appropriate by the Board of County Commissioners, in compliance with the conditions of approval, I, Commissioner Mitchell, recommend approval for, of special use permit 2025-014 to operate an outdoor establishment. The outdoor venue is associated with the Silverland Inn and will be, will include a variety of scheduled uses and special events. The property is located at 100 Northeast Street, Virginia City, Nevada. Assessors parcel number 001-152-04, 001-154-03, and 001-151-02.
A second. There's a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously. Thank you, Kathy.
Thank you.
Congratulations, Carol. On to item number 21, this is discussion only, no action, no public comment will be taken. Presentation and discussion featuring Story County Public Relations and Social Media Metrics, update from August 24th to January 2025. Julia?
Hi. Let me go.
Good morning. Julia Moreno-Fritz, Public Relations Officer for the record. So over the past six months, Story County's PR and social media efforts have made a measurable impact, increasing visibility, engagement, and outreach. And today, I will walk you through key data points that highlight this growth. We'll cover five areas: media outreach, social media performance, paid media campaigns, website analytics, and the next steps for Story County's PR and social media strategy. One of my first priorities in this role was creating a comprehensive media outreach list with over 30 newspapers, TV stations, and magazines across Reno, Sparks, Carson City, Virginia City, Dayton, Tahoe, Minden, and Gardinerville. I introduce myself as the county's primary media contact, strengthening our relationships with over 30 news outlets. We standardize our press releases with a consistent template and a new boilerplate, ensuring clarity and brand alignment in every announcement. In 2024, we issued five press releases, all of which received media coverage. I just want to quickly highlight one of the press releases, which was the Davis Creek Fire. It received widespread coverage, even reaching outlets as far as Oklahoma and Wisconsin. And this underscores the importance of timely media engagement during emergencies. For 2025, we've distributed two press releases thus far, both of which have gained media coverage. Additionally, we've seen media attention on non-press release topics such as the State of Counties address and developments with tri-data centers. Additionally, since I began working with the Comstock Chronicle as a contributor, we've had consistent weekly coverage on town halls, Board of County Commission meetings, grand openings, ribbon cuttings, and other key community events. Next, we'll dive into our social media analytics. One of my first major projects was establishing a weekly social media tracking system where I record engagement metrics such as likes, shares, comments, sentiment score, and top active times across platforms. Understanding our audience helps us tailor our messaging and outreach strategies. And here's a, here's a snapshot of who we're reaching. The majority of our followers are in Reno, followed by Sparks and Carson City. Though we also have engagement from Dayton, Virginia City, and Silver City in smaller numbers, this tells us that our reach is strongest in larger nearby cities while we have room to grow in our more local communities. As for our age group, the most engaged age group is 35 to 44, which making up 27% of our audience. We also have strong engagement from the 45 to 54 age group at 23% and the 25 to 34 age group at 18%. Notably, younger audiences, 18 to 24, just make up, make up just 4%, while older audiences, 55 and up, account for about 28% combined. This really shows that our strongest engagement is from mid-career professionals, 35 to 44, and families, meaning our content resonates most with working adults balancing careers in a community life. As for our gender breakdown, our audience skews slightly female at 54%, with men making up 43% of our followers with the remaining 3% undeclared. This balance suggests that we are reaching a broad demographic, though we might consider ways to increase engagement among men or further strengthen connections with our female audience. Now let's take a look at where our followers are in terms of platform and how our audience has grown over the past few months. Facebook remains our largest platform with 55% of our total audience followed by X at 25% and Instagram at nearly 15%. These three platforms make up the bulk of our reach, but we're also seeing steady growth in our newer channels. In just five months, we've grown our followers by over 700, bringing our total to over 8,500 followers, up from 7,700. This steady upwards trend highlights our growing influence and engagement. And I just want to quickly note that these numbers may not be exactly up to date as I submitted this presentation about two weeks ago, but it gives us a solid picture of our growth. As for our new platforms and expansion, we introduced LinkedIn in September and Threads in October. So while our audiences there are still pretty small, we're actively nurturing them. And LinkedIn's early success aligns with Story County's economic development focus, making it a platform to watch. Finally, I want to talk about engagement, impressions, and reach. These are also three key metrics that I track alongside follower growth and demographics. And you might be wondering what these metrics mean. Impressions are like views. This is the number of times a post is displayed, even if it's viewed multiple times by the same person. You can think of this like a billboard. Every time someone drives by, it counts as an impression. Engagement are the, the interactions, so that's the total likes, the comments, the shares, the clicks. It's like when someone honks their horn because they liked that billboard. And reach is the unique viewers. The number of individual people who see a post at least once. So this would be the total number of different drivers who drive by and see that billboard. Some key takeaways from the last six months that you can see in this chart right here. Engagement skyrocketed, especially with Facebook. Facebook alone went from under 1% to 45%. Impressions also saw a massive leap. Facebook went from under 100 to nearly 10,000. And reach expanded significantly, particularly on Facebook, increasing from 1,700 in August to 9,100 in January. These are strong indicators of growth, but I do expect the numbers to level out over time as we establish a more consistent engagement baseline. And I've also included a few of our popular posts of 2024 here. Our most liked and engaged post for Facebook and LinkedIn was the donation of 270 turkeys and food bags from Redwood Materials for Thanksgiving. And our most, our top Instagram post was an RGJ article about Story County ranking number two for the best value and income to cost of living ratio. These insights help guide our content strategy, clearly post highlighting community impact and positive county recognition drive engagement. And overall, these trends show that our content is reaching more people, sparking conversations and increasing awareness of Story County. Moving forward, we'll keep refining our strategy based on what resonates most with our audience. I want to shift gears now and take a closer look at some of our paid media efforts, including billboards, Nevada newsmakers, and online advertising. These campaigns have been strategically designed to increase awareness of Story County and its role in shaping Nevada's future. To start, let's talk about the billboards. I've included visuals so you can see them in action down here, as well as the design asset in high resolution. The Carson City billboard, this one on your, I'm not good at my left and my right, it'll be my left, this one. The Carson City billboard is located at the southwest corner of Carson Street and College Parkway. And the Reno billboard is positioned in South Reno near the Demani Ranch exit on US 395, like right next to CarMax. We picked these places intent, with a strategic purpose in mind. They're intentional. We're hoping to target legislators traveling from Reno to Carson City. And the goal is to reinforce the message that Story County is helping build Nevada's future and solidify our presence among key decision makers. Now that we've seen where the billboards are located and the messages they convey, let's get into the performance. Since the billboards are managed by two different companies, the data we have varies, but they both provide pretty valuable insights into their reach and impact. For Reno, our billboard is making significant impact with nearly 150,000 weekly impressions, adding up to over 592,000 total impressions over four weeks. This means that a large segment of the local population is repeatedly seeing our messages, repeatedly seeing our message reinforcing brand awareness. We're also reaching 15% of the local population each week, and over the course of 20 weeks, the campaign will effectively reach the target audience three times over. This repetition strengthens the message retention and increases the likelihood of engagement with Story County. As for Carson, our Carson billboard provides really high exposure with both the north and south faces displaying for over 323,000 seconds across over 40,000 displays. This ensures consistent and repeated messaging for those traveling in the area. Across both faces, the billboard was displayed over 80,000 times, ensuring that our messaging was seen by thousands of daily commuters and reinforcing brand recognition in the region. With nearly 150,000 weekly impressions in Reno and consistent visibility in Carson City, we're ensuring that key decision makers see our messages multiple times. As beyond the billboards, we've also invested in digital visibility through Nevada newsmakers. And while the data available to us is a little bit limited, we do have key impression numbers that give us an idea of how these placements are performing. The vertical ad is performing well, with 123,000 impressions exceeding standard benchmarks for regional campaigns. Meanwhile, the banner ad, while smaller with 12,000 impressions, still shows good visibility for its placement. And in addition to traditional media, we've been running videos across Google, Facebook, and Instagram as part of our legislative strategy. I collaborated with 88 Studios to create a commercial for Nevada newsmakers. And they also produced four mini versions of that commercial, which I'm using for our digital ads that you can see here. I didn't include the whole video today because I'm trying to keep things brief, but I'd be happy to share it with anyone who hasn't seen it yet. We're extremely proud of how it turned out. It exceeded my expectations. And I want to look at how these campaigns are performing and what we've learned so far. Our Google Ads are reaching a broad audience with 59% women and 41% men. This suggests we're attracting a fairly balanced demographic, though we may explore ways to reach more men or women depending on our campaign goals. With a view rate of over 15%, our ads are performing quite well in terms of engagement. This means that almost 16% of people who saw our ad clicked to watch it, which is also a solid figure for display and YouTube network ads. These ads have been predominantly shown on mobile devices, aligning with the trend of mobile-first behavior. This shows that our audience is primarily consuming content on the go, so mobile optimized content is critical for future ads. Fortunately, I collaborated with 88 to ensure we had the right digital assets to create impactful online ads using this legislative commercial. It is important to note that we are working with a little less data from Google at the moment as it takes more time for the platform to create a baseline. But I am, and I'm also working on installing a Google tag on the backend of all of our pages on our website so that we can contract, we can track conversions better and say, get more data. I should have better information to share about our Google Ads the next time I do a presentation like this. And on the Facebook and Instagram side, the audience is primarily male at 73%, with women making up 25%. Interestingly, while the organic content that we have on our page tends to attract more women, our paid ads are generating significantly more engagement for men. This suggests that organic content resonates more with the female audience, while the ads are either reaching more men or more appealing to them. So that's just something interesting to note. Our reach for this platform stands at 6,600, meaning this many unique individuals have seen our ads. And the impressions are nearly 5,300, meaning people are seeing our ads multiple times. It's good to note that the total impressions here are slightly lower than our Google campaigns, but the engagement seems pretty promising. The video plays on Facebook and Instagram also shows strong engagement with 5,200 plays. This is a good sign that people are sticking with the content, especially for video ads, which can sometimes lose viewers pretty quickly. And we also have data from Google or from Facebook and Instagram on how well our videos are capturing and keeping attention. The hook rate is 3%, which means only 3% of viewers are immediately engaging with the ad's opening. However, the hold rate is almost 6%, which indicates that after the initial interaction, a higher percentage of people are staying engaged with the content longer than we might have expected. I'll continue to adjust and experiment more with our ads over the next few months to see what works and what doesn't. As we continue leveraging our paid media, another crucial part of our digital presence is our website. Let's take a look at the recent updates and how we're improving user experience. Since August, I've worked with several departments, including business development, community development, and health and community services to enhance their webpages. Some of these updates have included refreshing, refreshing and refining website copy for clarity and accessibility, designing graphics to improve visual appeal and user experience, coding and implementing forms like the one shown here all the way on the right, yeah, on the right, modeled after Lyon County's Human Services Form to allow individuals to confidentially request help from Stacy and her team for themselves or others in the community. And these updates are just the beginning, and we'll continue refining the website to better serve our community. But I want to take a look at how the website is performing so far with our Google Analytics. So I just started tracking these in February, and our data is still establishing a baseline. However, the early insights are promising and showing strong engagement with our site. We've had over 10,000 active users so far with 5,800 new users, the majority coming from organic search traffic, which tells us that people are actively searching for information related to Story County and finding our site through search engines rather than paid ads or direct links, which is pretty impressive. That's not standard. Most people use ads to get people to come to their website. So that's great for us. For our engagement metrics, users are staying on the site for an average of one minute and three seconds, suggesting that they're engaging with the content rather than leaving quickly. While one minute may seem pretty short, it's important to note that the average TikTok video is only 15 to 42 seconds, which makes our engagement time even more promising in comparison to current attention span trends. And our engagement rate is 58%, meaning that over half of our visitors are interacting with the content rather than just bouncing after landing on a page. At this point, we don't have demographic data available, but as the system collects more user activity over time, we'll gain deeper insights into who's visiting our site and how we can optimize content to better serve our audience. As we continue tracking website analytics and gathering more insights, we'll use this data to refine our digital presence and better engage our audience. But our focus isn't just on the present, we're also looking ahead at how we can strengthen Story County's public relations strategy overall. And that brings us to what's next for Story County Communications and PR. The data speaks for itself. Story County is expanding its reach, strengthening community engagement, and solidifying its role in Nevada's future. To build on this momentum, I will strengthen relationships with local media to increase TV and print coverage of county news. I will enhance social media and website engagement, positioning these outlets as the go-to sources for county updates and information. I'll be attending the government's social media conference in May to refine platform management strategies and stay ahead of industry trends. And finally, I will develop clear and consistent branding guidelines to ensure a unified look and tone across all county communications. I believe that by implementing these strategies, we will continue to elevate Story County's public presence and keep our community well informed. I want to thank you so much for your time today, and if you have any questions for me, I'd be happy to answer them.
Thank you very much for that update, Julia. It's definitely new to our lineup of things that we do in the county and it's greatly appreciated. Before I go to my fellow commissioners, I just want to compliment you on what you've done with our social media department, which is obviously much larger than social media. The responses I've been getting from folks that have stumbled across Story County is absolutely positive. So keep up the great work. I think you're definitely doing a lot more than I had anticipated when we brought you on board. But you're making Story County look good. I truly appreciate that.
Thank you. I appreciate that.
Commissioner Gillman, do you have anything?
Just comment. I mean, those are really impressive numbers. So congratulations on that. I mean, job well done. And thank you for the presentation. That was a great presentation.
Thank you.
Vice Chairman, do you have anything?
I'd really wish to add just actually what you said. Thanks so much, Julia.
All right. And I don't, there isn't any, nobody has any public comment? Awesome. Thank you again for that presentation. All right, moving on to item number 22. This is discussion for possible action. Consideration of possible approval directing the comptroller to notify the Nevada Department of Taxation of the property tax rate. Story County Board of County Commissioners propose to levy for fiscal year '25 through '26. Comptroller McCain?
Good morning. Jennifer McCain for the record. This is a little bit of a housekeeping issue every year in this time of year. Usually in February, but our meetings kind of went wonky. We need to let the Department of Taxation know what our property tax rate will be for fiscal year, the following fiscal year. I've provided you with two possible letters. One is no change in the tax rate, which staff is recommending. And the other, if there is any appetite to change the rate. It is important to note that if we are changing the rate, we should have already done all of our background work and had that rate ready to go, so.
So you're telling us we don't have a choice?
Yeah, basically.
Good to know. All right. Commissioner Gillman, do you have any, you're all done? Jennifer?
I'm done.
Okay. Commissioner Gillman, do you have any questions or comments?
So apologize, I'm new to this and wasn't here for the last audit. Noticed in the letter there was something to do with a special fund that was over budget. Is that correct?
Can you repeat your question?
So I believe I'm on the right item and maybe, we're on 23, correct?
We are on item 22.
Oh, 22. I apologize. I do not have any.
Okay.
Vice Chairman, do you have anything?
No, as much as I would dearly love to message Jennifer and propose a rate change, I think I'm going to change it.
All right. Says the guy who just got out of reelections. All right. Is there any public comment? Sure.
Jim Hindle, Clerk and Treasurer, I just want to say that we get a lot of calls about property taxes, especially as people get their assessment. And when that information comes out and they're talking to us about why their taxes are going up. And I think it's important to emphasize that property taxes have not gone up for many years. And that the sensitivity to that is, I think we should communicate because we do have a lot of families and a lot of people in our county that are on fixed income. And the fact that property taxes have remained constant helps them out and helps our property owners. We do see assessments going up. The whole region property values, building values have gone up. And that's where they see their change and that's what we communicate. But when people understand that you, as commissioners, have not raised property taxes, they are appreciative.
Thank you. Any other public comment? All right, not seeing any. Vice Chairman, you prepared to make a motion?
Yes, I am. Vice Commissioner Mitchell, move to give the comptroller to inform the Vice Commissioner Mitchell, move to approve the comptroller to reform the Nevada Department of Taxation with the Story County Board of Commissioners propose to levy a property tax rate of three point four six oh seven percent in the fiscal year twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six.
A second? There's a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously. Thank you, Jennifer. On to item number twenty-three, is discussion for possible action, consideration and possible approval of Story County's plan of corrective action in response to the Department of Taxation's review of fiscal year twenty-four annual audit report and identified violations pursuant to NRS three five four dot six two five four. Comptroller McCain.
Good morning. Jennifer McCain for the record. Commissioner Gilman, I'll try to answer all your questions, but I'm sure you'll have a few. This is basically, as well, another housekeeping issue. Our audit is a very big document, covers the entire fiscal year of all the revenues, expenses, liabilities, assets. When our auditor, Joe Costanza, gave you the update, he did point out these deficiencies, and then I need to wait for the Department of Taxation to find them and ask for our plan of corrective action. So this is a formal way to let Department of Taxation know what I'm going to do as a department head to make sure that these things don't happen again, as well as inform them that the board basically knows that I made a mistake, I guess. I don't know. So. And every year, the letter is basically the same back to taxation, although they want us to find new and inventive ways to correct the problem or put policies in place to make sure that these things don't happen. Unfortunately, in my world of numbers, it's usually black and white, and when these errors are made, it's something was overlooked or could not be foreseen. So with that being said, I'll get into items that they talked about. We had three of our special revenue funds that had a line item within the budget that exceeded what we had budgeted for. These three funds, Drug Court, Equipment Acquisition, and the federal and state grant funds, all had expenses paid in July that were backdated into June. At that point, the county had already gone through the augment and transfer process, and it is what it is. I did not foresee these expenses being paid after that process was made, and that's why they were out of budget. Being out of budget does not mean that it affected the overall bottom line or that these three funds had a deficiency in their fund balance. None of that occurred. They all still have an ample fund balance, and we paid our bills. So it's just that the actuals did not match the budget. With the second note that sounds a little bit more, I don't know, a little bit more negative than the other ones. Upon looking into that, this was an issue where a transfer was made to cover an over-actual spending, which created a deficiency in the fund balance of the budget only. This deficiency in the fund balance was approximately ninety thousand dollars. However, the actual fund balance of emergency mitigation is approximately five hundred and ninety thousand dollars. So while on the surface it looks like a major deficiency, again, it is a budgeted number, not an actual number. So do you have any further questions?
I do not. Thank you.
Okay.
Fair enough. Thank you, Jennifer. Vice Chairman, do you have any questions for Jennifer?
I don't have any questions. Thank you.
All right. Is there any public comment on this item? Not seeing any. Vice Chairman, you prepared to make a motion?
Yes. Vice Commissioner Mitchell, move to approve Story County's plan of corrective action in response to the Nevada Department of Taxation's review of the fiscal year twenty twenty-four annual audit report and identified violation pursuant to NRS three five four dot six two four five.
Second? There's a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jennifer. On to item number twenty-four, is to recess convene as the Story County Fire Protection District Board, bringing us to item number twenty-five, which is discussion for possible action. Consideration of possible approval to increase previously approved funding from the Capital Projects Fund for the purchase of a tractor and trailer that were outlined in the district CIP to an estimated amount of three hundred and forty thousand, an increase of forty thousand dollars. Sir?
Good morning again, Commissioners Jim Morgan, Assistant Fire Chief for the record. Yeah, we're looking for to increase another forty thousand dollars. What we found in the like-new condition as opposed to factory-new, significant differences there and don't necessarily meet our needs, and we can't really outline what we're looking at as far as equipment. As far as the tractor-trailer goes, we're looking at stuff that's at like-new condition with close to a million miles on it. Our current pickup build has about eight hundred and fifty thousand on it that we continue to use. And the same thing goes with the trailer. Looking at that, we can't afford to look at stress cracks, weld breaks, overloading, all those other kinds of things. And looking at a brand-new vehicle and trailer, we're going to get a service agreement with that along with a warranty. It'll meet our needs significantly better. We do have the money. We're still looking for another seven hundred thousand dollars from wireline billing coming to us. So we would have to augment the budget. We'll be there, and we'd be much better off for the fire district with a new vehicle.
All right. Thank you. Commissioner Gilman, do you have any questions or comments?
No, I don't. Thank you.
Fire Commissioner Mitchell, do you have any questions or comments?
I'm good. Thanks.
All right. Not to be odd man out here, but what was the cost of a brand-new one?
That's what we're looking at, three hundred and forty thousand dollars.
That's brand-new?
Yeah.
Okay. I think that'll do it for me. Not seeing any other comments from the commissioners. Is there any public comment at this time? All right, not seeing any. Fire Commissioner Mitchell, you prepared to make a motion?
Yes, sir. Fire Commissioner Mitchell, move to approve an increase in available funds from the Capital Projects Fund for the purchase of a tractor and trailer at the estimated amount of three hundred and forty thousand dollars, an increase of forty thousand dollars.
That's second? There's a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously. Thank you very much. Have a good afternoon. All right, item twenty-six has been postponed. On to item number twenty-seven, to recess convene as the Story County Board of County Commissioners, bringing us to item number twenty-eight, which is discussion for possible action. Consideration of possible approval of resolution number twenty-five dash seven six five of the Board of Commissioners of Story County, Nevada, reaffirming the Board's request to the Nevada delegation to advance federal public lands legislation, commonly referred to as the Truckee Meadows Public Lands Management Act, to support conservation, recreation, and economic development in Washoe County. County Manager Osborne.
All right. Thank you, Commissioners Austin Osborne for the record, County Manager. About two thousand and eighteen, the county commissioners created a resolution recognizing and supporting the Truckee Meadows Lands Bill that's being sponsored by Truckee Meadows, Reno Sparks, Washoe. And in two thousand and twenty-one, I had brought that to this board again as the board had changed to reaffirm that resolution. And we use that resolution to let folks like Cortez Masto's office, Amade's office, and Rosen's office, and even local officials, know that this is really a regional thing. We support it. We're part of it. We want to be as supportive as we possibly can in those endeavors, even though it's not technically in our county. This lands bill would benefit Washoe County principally, but would benefit the region, we believe, with the potential facilitation of the La Pasada Connector connecting USA Parkway to North Valley's Reno Sparks, economic development, natural resources and cultural resources, preservation, and kind of a mixed use, as well as potential for housing development, economic development, business development, and things that Reno Sparks or Washoe County and Sparks have planned for the area. Being that we now have a new board member on this board, I'd like to ask to reaffirm that resolution by asking this board to reapprove that resolution as it was in the past, and then we would continue to use that document to express our support for their endeavor.
All right. Thank you, Austin. Commissioner Gilman, do you have any questions or comments at this time?
No, thank you.
Vice Chairman?
Just a comment or two. And that is that, well, I'm going to be meeting with Amade's office tomorrow morning, and I imagine this will be a topic of conversation. So if there are any updates, I'll certainly bring that back. I'm supportive of re-upping our support for this. The form that the Washoe County or Truckee Meadows Lands Bill ended up with, ended up with a lot of set-asides for wilderness areas, particularly up north in Washoe County, to the point where that may be something that would be difficult for some of our Amade's colleagues to support, feeling like maybe there was too much set aside for wilderness or untouched areas in exchange for the areas that would be accessible for development. And so that's certainly something that I think will be discussed and trying to get at that. That being said, I also don't really feel like it's our job to tell Washoe County specifically how to do their business, and if they have negotiated that within their different interest groups, and they think that that's something that's workable and happy to support in their approach. I just have a feeling that potentially with the current makeup of Congress, it may need some modification, and so. Anyway, well, that's something that remains to be seen, but I have no problem renewing our support for this effort. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice Chairman. You took the words right out of my mouth. Is there any public comment on this item? Not seeing any. You prepared to make a motion?
Mr. Chair, before a motion is made unless Brian disagrees, I do believe I need to read the title of the resolution.
Please do that.
Am I, okay, I'll just go ahead and do it. Resolution number twenty-five seven sixty-five. It's a resolution of the Board of Commissioners of Story County, Nevada, requesting the Nevada delegation to advance federal public lands legislation, commonly referred to as the Truckee Meadows Public Lands Management Act to support conservation, recreation, and economic development in Washoe County.
Thank you, Austin. Vice Chairman, you prepared to make a motion at this time?
Yes, sir. With that, I, Commissioner Mitchell, move to approve resolution number twenty-five dash seven six five of the Board of Commissioners of Story County, Nevada, reaffirming this Board's request to the Nevada delegation to advance federal public lands legislation, commonly referred to as the Truckee Meadows Public Lands Management Act, to support conservation, recreation, and economic development in Washoe County.
Second? All right, there's a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously. Thank you. Before we jump on to item number twenty-nine and thirty, I'm going to ask for a quick ten-minute recess. See y'all back here in just about ten minutes.
[inaudible]
All right, there's a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you. Before we jump on to item number twenty-nine and thirty, I'm going to ask for a quick ten-minute recess. We'll see y'all back here in just about ten minutes.
[inaudible]
All right, there's a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you. Before we jump on to item number twenty-nine and thirty, I'm going to ask for a quick ten-minute recess. We'll see y'all back here in just about ten minutes.
[inaudible]
All right, there's a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you. Before we jump on to item number twenty-nine and thirty, I'm going to ask for a quick ten-minute recess. We'll see y'all back here in just about ten minutes.
[inaudible]
All right, there's a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you. Before we jump on to item number twenty-nine and thirty, I'm going to ask for a quick ten-minute recess. We'll see y'all back here in just about ten minutes.
[inaudible]
All right, there's a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you. Before we jump on to item number twenty-nine and thirty, I'm going to ask for a quick ten-minute recess. We'll see y'all back here in just about ten minutes.
[inaudible]
All right, there's a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you. Before we jump on to item number twenty-nine and thirty, I'm going to ask for a quick ten-minute recess. We'll see y'all back here in just about ten minutes.
[inaudible]
All right, there's a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you. Before we jump on to item number twenty-nine and thirty, I'm going to ask for a quick ten-minute recess. We'll see y'all back here in just about ten minutes.
[inaudible]
All right, there's a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you. Before we jump on to item number twenty-nine and thirty, I'm going to ask for a quick ten-minute recess. We'll see y'all back here in just about ten minutes.
[inaudible]
All right, there's a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you. Before we jump on to item number twenty-nine and thirty, I'm going to ask for a quick ten-minute recess. We'll see y'all back here in just about ten minutes.
[inaudible]
All right, there's a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you. Before we jump on to item number twenty-nine and thirty, I'm going to ask for a quick ten-minute recess. We'll see y'all back here in just about ten minutes.
[inaudible]
All right, there's a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you. Before we jump on to item number twenty-nine and thirty, I'm going to ask for a quick ten-minute recess. We'll see y'all back here in just about ten minutes.
[inaudible]
All right, there's a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you. Before we jump on to item number twenty-nine and thirty, I'm going to ask for a quick ten-minute recess. We'll see y'all back here in just about ten minutes.
[inaudible]
All right, there's a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you. Before we jump on to item number twenty-nine and thirty, I'm going to ask for a quick ten-minute recess. We'll see y'all back here in just about ten minutes.
[inaudible]
All right, there's a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you. Before we jump on to item number twenty-nine and thirty, I'm going to ask for a quick ten-minute recess. We'll see y'all back here in just about ten minutes.
[inaudible]
All right, there's a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you. Before we jump on to item number twenty-nine and thirty, I'm going to ask for a quick ten-minute recess. We'll see y'all back here in just about ten minutes.
[inaudible]
All right, there's a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you. Before we jump on to item number twenty-nine and thirty, I'm going to ask for a quick ten-minute recess. We'll see y'all back here in just about ten minutes.
[inaudible]
All right, there's a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you. Before we jump on to item number twenty-nine and thirty, I'm going to ask for a quick ten-minute recess. We'll see y'all back here in just about ten minutes.
[inaudible]
All right, there's a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you. Before we jump on to item number twenty-nine and thirty, I'm going to ask for a quick ten-minute recess. We'll see y'all back here in just about ten minutes.
[inaudible]
All right, there's a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you. Before we jump on to item number twenty-nine and thirty, I'm going to ask for a quick ten-minute recess. We'll see y'all back here in just about ten minutes.
[inaudible]
All right, there's a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you. Before we jump on to item number twenty-nine and thirty, I'm going to ask for a quick ten-minute recess. We'll see y'all back here in just about ten minutes.
[inaudible]
All right, there's a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you. Before we jump on to item number twenty-nine and thirty, I'm going to ask for a quick ten-minute recess. We'll see y'all back here in just about ten minutes.
[inaudible]
All right, there's a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you. Before we jump on to item number twenty-nine and thirty, I'm going to ask for a quick ten-minute recess. We'll see y'all back here in just about ten minutes.
[inaudible]
All right, there's a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you. Before we jump on to item number twenty-nine and thirty, I'm going to ask for a quick ten-minute recess. We'll see y'all back here in just about ten minutes.
[inaudible]
All right, there's a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you. Before we jump on to item number twenty-nine and thirty, I'm going to ask for a quick ten-minute recess. We'll see y'all back here in just about ten minutes.
[inaudible]
All right, there's a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you. Before we jump on to item number twenty-nine and thirty, I'm going to ask for a quick ten-minute recess. We'll see y'all back here in just about ten minutes.
[inaudible]
All right, there's a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you. Before we jump on to item number twenty-nine and thirty, I'm going to ask for a quick ten-minute recess. We'll see y'all back here in just about ten minutes.
[inaudible]
All right, there's a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you. Before we jump on to item number twenty-nine and thirty, I'm going to ask for a quick ten-minute recess. We'll see y'all back here in just about ten minutes.
[inaudible]
All right, there's a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you. Before we jump on to item number twenty-nine and thirty, I'm going to ask for a quick ten-minute recess. We'll see y'all back here in just about ten minutes.
[inaudible]
All right, there's a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you. Before we jump on to item number twenty-nine and thirty, I'm going to ask for a quick ten-minute recess. We'll see y'all back here in just about ten minutes.
[inaudible]
All right, there's a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you. Before we jump on to item number twenty-nine and thirty, I'm going to ask for a quick ten-minute recess. We'll see y'all back here in just about ten minutes.
[inaudible]
All right, there's a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you. Before we jump on to item number twenty-nine and thirty, I'm going to ask for a quick ten-minute recess. We'll see y'all back here in just about ten minutes.
[inaudible]
All right, there's a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you. Before we jump on to item number twenty-nine and thirty, I'm going to ask for a quick ten-minute recess. We'll see y'all back here in just about ten minutes.
[inaudible]
All right, there's a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you. Before we jump on to item number twenty-nine and thirty, I'm going to ask for a quick ten-minute recess. We'll see y'all back here in just about ten minutes.
[inaudible]
All right, there's a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you. Before we jump on to item number twenty-nine and thirty, I'm going to ask for a quick ten-minute recess. We'll see y'all back here in just about ten minutes.
[inaudible]
All right, there's a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you. Before we jump on to item number twenty-nine and thirty, I'm going to ask for a quick ten-minute recess. We'll see y'all back here in just about ten minutes.
[inaudible]
All right, there's a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you. Before we jump on to item number twenty-nine and thirty, I'm going to ask for a quick ten-minute recess. We'll see y'all back here in just about ten minutes.
[inaudible]
All right, there's a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you. Before we jump on to item number twenty-nine and thirty, I'm going to ask for a quick ten-minute recess. We'll see y'all back here in just about ten minutes.
[inaudible]
All right, there's a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you. Before we jump on to item number twenty-nine and thirty, I'm going to ask for a quick ten-minute recess. We'll see y'all back here in just about ten minutes.
[inaudible]
All right, there's a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you. Before we jump on to item number twenty-nine and thirty, I'm going to ask for a quick ten-minute recess. We'll see y'all back here in just about ten minutes.
[inaudible]
All right, there's a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you. Before we jump on to item number twenty-nine and thirty, I'm going to ask for a quick ten-minute recess. We'll see y'all back here in just about ten minutes.
[inaudible]
All right, there's a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you. Before we jump on to item number twenty-nine and thirty, I'm going to ask for a quick ten-minute recess. We'll see y'all back here in just about ten minutes.
[inaudible]
All right, there's a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you. Before we jump on to item number twenty-nine and thirty, I'm going to ask for a quick ten-minute recess. We'll see y'all back here in just about ten minutes.
[inaudible]
All right, there's a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you. Before we jump on to item number twenty-nine and thirty, I'm going to ask for a quick ten-minute recess. We'll see y'all back here in just about ten minutes.
[inaudible]
All right, there's a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you. Before we jump on to item number twenty-nine and thirty, I'm going to ask for a quick ten-minute recess. We'll see y'all back here in just about ten minutes.
[inaudible]
All right, there's a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you. Before we jump on to item number twenty-nine and thirty, I'm going to ask for a quick ten-minute recess. We'll see y'all back here in just about ten minutes.
[inaudible]
All right, there's a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you. Before we jump on to item number twenty-nine and thirty, I'm going to ask for a quick ten-minute recess. We'll see y'all back here in just about ten minutes.
[inaudible]
All right, there's a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you. Before we jump on to item number twenty-nine and thirty, I'm going to ask for a quick ten-minute recess. We'll see y'all back here in just about ten minutes.
[inaudible]
All right, there's a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you. Before we jump on to item number twenty-nine and thirty, I'm going to ask for a quick ten-minute recess. We'll see y'all back here in just about ten minutes.
[inaudible]
All right, there's a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you. Before we jump on to item number twenty-nine and thirty, I'm going to ask for a quick ten-minute recess. We'll see y'all back here in just about ten minutes.
[inaudible]
All right, there's a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you. Before we jump on to item number twenty-nine and thirty, I'm going to ask for a quick ten-minute recess. We'll see y'all back here in just about ten minutes.
[inaudible]
All right, there's a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you. Before we jump on to item number twenty-nine and thirty, I'm going to ask for a quick ten-minute recess. We'll see y'all back here in just about ten minutes.
[inaudible]
All right, there's a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you. Before we jump on to item number twenty-nine and thirty, I'm going to ask for a quick ten-minute recess. We'll see y'all back here in just about ten minutes.
[inaudible]
All right, there's a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you. Before we jump on to item number twenty-nine and thirty, I'm going to ask for a quick ten-minute recess. We'll see y'all back here in just about ten minutes.
[inaudible]
All right, there's a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you. Before we jump on to item number twenty-nine and thirty, I'm going to ask for a quick ten-minute recess. We'll see y'all back here in just about ten minutes.
[inaudible]
All right, there's a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you. Before we jump on to item number twenty-nine and thirty, I'm going to ask for a quick ten-minute recess. We'll see y'all back here in just about ten minutes.
[inaudible]
All right, there's a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you. Before we jump on to item number twenty-nine and thirty, I'm going to ask for a quick ten-minute recess. We'll see y'all back here in just about ten minutes.
[inaudible]
All right, there's a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you. said, if you're still comfortable, we'll prepare accordingly. We'll still put SB 69, AB 77, or SB 77, and certain bills of key interest will still continue to show up on the agendas if you so wish, so we can engage in those.
I think that's a good plan.
Okay. Another one, I think, at the moment, I would pass this one to Commissioner Mitchell if he has anything you'd like to discuss with Senate Bill 32 regarding the Virginia and Truckee Railway.
I'm having to take that into clarification. That's Assembly Bill 32, I believe.
Oh, sorry about that.
No, that's quite all right. Really, really no updates to speak of on that. I believe it received its initial hearing before, just after our last meeting. Some good questions were asked. One of the questions that was asked was, it seemed there was an openness from the committee. Well, they didn't take any specific position openness to studying the Virginia and Truckee Railway Commission and what its future might be and what's possible. But it was mentioned that there's a limit on the amount of staff, time, and resources that they as a committee could use. And they ask if both were Railway Commission and potentially us as a local jurisdiction involved would be willing to work with them or help assemble data and kind of provide some preparation or support for that should they move forward with it. And we indicated that we have an openness to do it. So, obviously, not a commitment at this point, but just an understanding that if they create a study in the interim, that we'd have to be actively involved in that. It wouldn't be them doing everything by themselves. So, that's it.
Thank you, Vice Chairman.
I'm going to make a mention before. I do want to introduce again Will Adler from Silver State Government Relations. I did mention you earlier, Will, so you were not forgotten. There is a bill, AB 242, it's really, it's a bill regarding sagebrush ecosystems. But I did make a note that maybe the Fire District may be interested in this as they're doing fuels management programs throughout the county. Chief Lunkar agreed that he said if you like, you know, he could come up and speak to that. I do see Mr. Morgan representing Fire today. If you, if Mr. Morgan does want to speak to it, I certainly welcome him to come up about any concerns they have with a bill that may potentially protect sagebrush in such a way that hinders the Fire District from being able to do fire fuels reduction. If not, sorry to put you on the spot, sir. I think what I said was somewhat self-indicative of our concerns of that bill. We would be monitoring this bill at this time. All right. So, next is, there, we'll talk about, the last set of the bills I'd like to talk about are just kind of overall the alphabet soup that you see in that agenda item. But next, of course, would be Senate Bill 69. At this point, there's still ongoing conversations going on with some folks in the region, including with GOED, as well as the Nevada Department of Taxation, with particular regard to that data center abatement section, that auditing of those co-located pieces of equipment in those centers. There's a possibility so far that we might be able to resolve this issue or be able to amend the bill such to get data centers out of the bill and focus more on an administrative approach with those two entities and maybe other state entities. We are in discussions potentially as well. I want to ask this board what their thoughts are as far as staying strong on requiring that we have that engagement with the GOED board when these 1.0 and 3.5 billion dollar companies come our way, that we're actively participating as stakeholders in those applications, engaged throughout the entire process. There is, and that there would be a mandatory government services agreement for those two tax categories and that the Fire District would be at the table. What's brought to our attention and what we are talking about is some counties have more of an issue with the NRS than other counties. Story County has a development agreement that really allows these uses like data center or like giga factories without a special use permit, for example, or without further development agreements. The city of Reno may be in a situation where these are located in an airport district that has some freedoms and limitations from the city. And that we recognize there's many counties in the state that either don't have building departments, don't have zoning, or they don't have the structures in place to take on a massive project like this without some oversight and help from GOED. We believe that our bill addresses those matters. We also believe that some counties like Clark or Washoe may have special use permits and regulations in place where they can control things at a local level. And maybe some of the issues in this bill would not necessarily be as important to them as it would be to other jurisdictions in the state. There is one item that's very hot on our bill. It is the having a member on the board of GOED from our county and appointing. And that is one thing I would like to ask from this board. If you're comfortable giving directions for us to continue exploring alternatives with GOED and others to see if there might be some middle ground we could come up with on that. But so far, we would still like to hold strong on those other elements of this bill that we think are important and keep it as is. I don't know if Mr. Adler, you have anything you'd like to add to that? Otherwise, that's it.
Will Adler for the record with Silver State Government Relations. Also, Dev has accompanied me up today. And generally, I just want to speak to the legislative session as a whole or sort of how it's been going and the tone of the building. The governor's budget is the top issue at hand where we ended up with a first introductory budget of negative $300 million. So, that sets a tone of nobody's got a lot of money left. Everybody's going to be fighting over it. There is a lot to do when it comes to actually the restructuring of Medicaid and what's going to happen when it comes to the piles of money, how they get distributed, and where some of the calculations may go from here. I do think there's a bit of a weight towards the population of a county and kind of, does that reflect on the repayment status? There's already things in the books and in place, but there's a lot of talk of changes and things around that. So, in issues like that and other issues like Skip Daly's County Pay Bill, SB 116, just in particular, I and Story County are really bringing a rural voice to the table. And we're actually trying to bring that perspective, whereas most voices do come from the urban centers. You have a lot of elected officials from Washoe County and Clark County. We do want to make sure that the smaller perspectives and the smaller populations and the dynamics of governance at these levels do come through. So, we are going to sort of engage on some of these topics as need be or as they seem to maybe take a turn to need to have some Story County perspective of rural engagement on them. So, we're just mentioning those to cover them in general. And then, in addition to Mr. Osborne's sort of list, I do think the big bill of the day and the week is Story County's bill itself, SB 69. Previously, we have had a lot of engagement through the business communities or GOED itself or any of the chambers. We've taken some more direct approaches to saying, we would like to hear from you and hear your amendments. Those direct approaches have been heard, I think, because we do now have some direct dialogue and interface between the manufacturers, the different chambers, and GOED itself saying, we do understand your needs, we understand where you're coming from, but we do, we do ask that you change a few things this way or that. As Mr. Osborne stated, you know, having, having a board seat on the GOED board could become contentious, actually, if multiple, you know, large abatements came up at the same GOED meeting. They might have to, you know, add a lot of chairs, right? So, there were some mechanical things they brought up. They said, you know, that's fair. So, we're not here to be overly brandish, but we do have statements to make and we do have positions to take. And we are going to make those statements and take those positions. That's what I'm here to do. And we took a pretty hard line, but we're getting a lot of understanding why we're bringing this and what we're doing it for. We look forward to the committee hearing on Thursday, and I think we have everything lined up to have a pretty good presentation with the manager, the chair, and myself. If there's any questions about any of the dialogue, how it's going, or anything like that, I'd be glad to field any questions live. But yeah, there is a couple of live topics and a couple of things yet to come. Again, the governor does have his own BDR that is around economic development, has some foreshadowing about being similar to the GOED bill, AB 77, but we don't know today because we haven't seen the language yet, what exactly is going to be coming. But we have our eyes out and we'll be here to monitor what comes out. And where it's headed. Anything direct from the commission? I'll take it now. Thank you.
Thank you, Will. Commissioner Gellman, do you have anything for Will at this time?
Nothing, thank you.
Vice Chairman?
Just, just a couple of comments and thank you. You know, one of the things I think that would be helpful is there's, there's, on several of the issues that are in our bill, there has been a representation made that there may be ways to address those outside of particularly early notification and participation outside of a bill. And I guess one of the questions that comes to my mind is, are we okay exploring those, not necessarily committing to them at this point, but exploring ways to resolve some of those issues outside of a bill? The second piece is, I'm not here in solutions for everything or other issues that we've identified in the bill yet that could be done outside the bill. So, my take is, I'm open to discussing ways to solve some of those issues outside of the bill. That doesn't replace the need for the bill because, in my mind, the six issues that we've brought up in the bill are all things that we'd like to see addressed. And so, wondering from my fellow commissioners if there's an openness to exploring some of those, but not necessarily saying, yeah, we'll get rid of the bill because there are things that we do need the bill for. But if there are ways outside of legislation that we can address some of them, is that acceptable and can we instruct staff and our lawyers to move forward with that?
If I may comment on this as I'm at the lectern, Will Adler for the record, Silver State Government Relations. Yes, Commissioner Mitchell, I do agree with sort of that general broader perspective of, you know, let's, let's still address what we can in this bill and try and address what may be addressable outside of the language outside of the bill. To, to speak to this without over speaking to this maybe, County Manager Osborne and myself did actually have a direct conversation with the Department of Taxation just yesterday. Some of the comments that were made in that meeting were leading comments that we went into because such, such questions were asked of us by agencies like GOED and other, other places asking, you know, do you need such language in a bill cannot, you receive such information from, say, the Department of Taxation at a state level. So, we are actually trying to track down some of those comments, actually work with some of the language suggestions that were raised by GOED and other direct parties. And yes, I, I think just having the vessel here and keeping the introductory language as it is to some degree intact just shows the position we took for the reason we took it. We didn't, we didn't write all this in a bill for nonsense reasons, right? We actually have purpose behind each, each choice. But yeah, we are not here to be demonstrative and not work with interested parties, be it businesses in the park or GOED or the different agencies and chambers. So, yes, if you just give us general direction to try and work it out and figure it out inside and outside and what we think ultimately is the line for what needs to be in the bill, I believe County Manager Osborne will have some comments as well, but we're trying to determine that right now. Thank you.
If you're okay, Mr. Chairman and Vice Chairman Mitchell, I don't know if you want to deliberate amongst yourselves or if you want me to help kind of pull a couple of things in here that we think are important to us that may be in the middle.
Why don't you try to pull things together first?
All right. Well, we believe so far what we've expressed in our meetings and Mr. Adler's right, we've had conversations with both GOED as well as Department of Taxation. Department of Taxation matter really is exclusive to the data center element. Hold on, wait for this. We run that at 12 o'clock till everybody knows it's fixed. So, really, that's exclusive to the data center element. We're trying to get that out of the bill. There are some concerns about confidentiality and some other things. And we think we might be able to do that whether the resolution comes immediate or takes a little bit of time. There definitely is an interesting conversation going on with ways to address that auditing element of that. The second one really that GOED has expressed some concerns about is us having a designee on the GOED board. And mind you, that would mean a county commissioner and then a fire commissioner and then potentially, you know, a city council person or whatever it might be. And we've let them know that we want to talk, you know, propose some language, go ahead, let us take a look at it. Maybe we can go back and forth on that, like Mr. Adler had alluded to. And I, I would like to ask that this board is comfortable that we continue in those two directions. As far as having the Fire District represented in a 1.0 and a 3.5 billion dollar giga factory type of a project, and as far as the county being at the table and discussing the matters at the appropriate time of an application and at the point of having all those representatives involved, we really feel that those are absolutely essential, reminding us that there are some jurisdictions that don't have any other ways to address impacts of such a large company coming their way, whether it's police, fire, infrastructure, or you have it. So, we're asking at this point, we welcome your thoughts. And what you would like to direct us to do, Board, is to hold strong on Fire District, hold strong on that required GSA, unless the county says we don't need a GSA because we've got something else instead. They would work with GOED on that. And that that we would be involved in that process from the beginning and that we continue to discuss administrative potential ways to address the data center matter and continually engaging with GOED and others about having maybe an alternative to having us on that board. We are going to have a presentation this Thursday, as Mr. Adler said, to the Senate, I always say Revenue and Finance, Revenue and Economic Development Committee. And we're prepared to, whatever this board gives direction, to let them know that we're engaged in these conversations and there's still some work to do.
Okay. Good for now.
Thank you.
All right. So, Commissioner Gellman, is that clear for you as to the direction that they want?
Yeah, we're going to stand strong but be open to their suggestions that come in and then we'll discuss that, correct?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
That's how I took it. Okay, Vice Chairman, you good with that game plan?
Yes, I am good with that. I, I feel like we, we may need to massage some of the wording on some of our bill because the way it came out, and I don't know if that was on our end or if it was LCP, but it may not exactly represent where we're at. I'll give you just one example on that. You know, we were asking for abatements not to be retroactive into a previous fiscal year. That's kind of the pain point that we've had, where we have to go back and open up a previous fiscal year and refund taxes that were paid. I believe the current language on the bill says that they have to be, they have to go into effect when they're approved. That's, that's different than not being retroactive to a previous.
I agree.
I, I think you froze.
Yep.
Commissioner Mitchell, hold on, you froze. Commissioner Mitchell, have you maybe turned your camera off and back on? It might read, oh, you're back, okay. We may not have heard everything you said. We heard everything up to approved versus the time that that application is considered for that retroactive.
Yeah. Is it coming through our area now?
Yes.
Yes.
Yeah. So, so, I mean, the long and the short of it is, I, I just, I just want to make sure that, that we're clear on the intent and realize that we may, we may need to make sure that our wording lines up with what, what we really need out of the bill. Because again, I don't know if it had to do with how we crafted it or what came out of LCP, which doesn't always accurately 100% reflect what, what our intent was. But yeah, I'm, for me personally, I'm comfortable with hopefully fast on some of the items, which are, in my mind, clearly is not a way to, to take care of outside of legislation. And then looking at alternatives for those areas, what do you think would be something outside the bill?
May I respond to Commissioner Mitchell, Chair?
Sure.
All right, Austin Osborne for the record. I think what Commissioner Mitchell is saying, and I think I hear this right, is right now, the language that we have is the time that that retroactive application would be come is really dependent on the time that an application is approved. GOED would like to see it at the point of received. But what Commissioner Mitchell is saying is really not respective to that. It's really respective to the prior fiscal year. And it doesn't say that. And I would be happy to discuss a modification or some kind of back and forth to make the bill really focus more on the prior fiscal year as opposed to the time an application is received or approved. I think I'm hearing that right. Thank you.
Did he hear you right, Clay?
Yes, yes, that's my point. And, and, you know, that concept may still be problematic for the lit. They've expressed a concern, I think, that they don't, that it becomes somewhat arbitrary to not be able to go retroactive. And their concern is, they want a company to feel comfortable putting, you know, moving their, and spending money while the, while the process is working through. And so, that may require some further conversation. But I feel like our position is, the biggest pain point is if we have to go back to a previous year, that's kind of where we want to hold the line. And if we can come up with something that accommodates their concerns, that would be great. But I just, I think, taking up that language, that piece is important.
Will Adler for the record with Silver State Government Relations. I agree with you, Mr. Mitchell, and I do think that was somewhat a product of intentions and LCP drafting coming out a little different. And I, I think there's a way we can massage or even directly delete that language and rewrite it in the, the correct fashion. Even if it ended up with it being the company has to give the county notice that they believe that they're going to ask for a rebate in the, the next calendar year, that could be sufficient to at least let, let the county fiscal team know what's coming, if there is a hangover from the year before. But today, now, we just don't have anything in that, that, that information or teeth pile. So, I'll try and figure out what you've stated and your intentions. And I'll, I'll, I'll write up an amendment directly on that piece of it. And a few other of the pieces we're trying to figure out. There's no perfection, but the better good from where we are today. Yeah.
Very good, thank you.
I don't know if this is the end of SB 69, but I would also like to at least state a few other bills we are tracking and looking into for the, the team.
Okay.
Now is an appropriate time.
Are we wrapped up on SB 69? There's no other direction needed?
I'm comfortable and I'm preparing to summarize at the end as well.
Okay. Go ahead, Will.
Okay. I do think there is a good bill coming when it comes to rail studies, actually. But in the rail study bill, I think we may have misstated it on the agenda today.
We did.
And it is AB 258, I believe. But the right, the light rail study could actually be in conjunction with sort of the RTC work we're doing today regionally. It comes to RTC, Story County has taken a good forward stance of trying to help solve the public transportation issues around Highway 80. Possibly having a light rail or some sort of rail enhanced corridor could be a solution for the, the current bottleneck at 80. So, I just wanted to make sure we stated the, the correct bill number on that one and that we are actively kind of tracking that bill and looking forward to it. And then, we do have two bills that are trying to do the same effort. One is SB 232 from Senator Krasner allocating money for veterans in the Virginia City VA. But we also have AB 300, which has almost the exact same language from Assemblyman Ken Gray. So, I do think the, the Veterans Authority asked both representatives for some sort of support, but we will try and blend those together into one bill and make sure that a unified support kind of comes out of that. Because sometimes when they see two vessels, it kind of stalls both. So, we'll try and make the two sponsors work together and, and blend those together just to make sure that's clear, that we're not killing one bill or another. We'll, we'll try and get them to work together. But yeah, that's sort of the cleanup stuff, including the sagebrush ecosystem that Austin mentioned for the new add-ons this week. We do still have SB 78, BNI's consolidation of boards bill that, that's got some chop to go, and AB 32, the VNT Railway Bill, but those were mentioned, and the AB 128 ombudsman bill and public records requests. We are also actively, you know, monitoring that and making comments as needed. That is all.
All right, thank you.
Mr. Chair, there's a couple of other bills if you don't mind.
Sure.
Okay. I just want to make a small correction on the rail study. That is for Northern Nevada and Southern, and Southern Nevada. I believe it's AB 256. And no worries. And so, there's a couple of things on that Vet Center. Lisa Meisel is with us as well from my office. She's been looking into this as she works a lot on our veterans policies and things like that. But at this point, we believe it might be most appropriate for her just to give direction for us to monitor and research this bill and look into how it might apply in our area. The public records request ombudsman that Mr. Adler talked about, the rail study for North and Southern Nevada, Nevada. There's a bill regarding sign language and ADA requirements. It might be pop-capped, but we're looking to see maybe the potential that we would have to, per request, provide sign language interpretation of these meetings. We're looking at that. And then, the daylight savings time bill, we ask, there was an interest expressed from this board earlier to look into that. We can take whatever action you want, but at this point, we're asking just to monitor and keep an eye on those. I will note the daylight savings time bill that's in there. That means keep it standard. That means there's no jump forward and late sun in the summer. It means it stays dark later. And that's all we have at this point.
And there's no modification regarding that daylight savings bill? I thought that was open for discussion, but it's pretty firm that, how the time's set up? So, there's no way they would happen to flip that?
My, my understanding, Austin Osborne for the record, if I'm answering your question, I don't know anything about other than the bill was submitted, is to keep standard time all year long. So, we would no longer jump ahead to daylight savings time in the spring and summer. That would cause the sun to go down later. It would be like it is now all the time. I could be incorrect, but I do believe that it requires congressional action ultimately if the state is going to, if the legislators approve this and the governor approves it, I believe it might require congressional approval as well. I believe there's maybe like 25 or 30 other states that have taken similar action like this, but they have not gone to the new time. I'm not going to go any further in that because it may get, there's some complication on whether you're going to daylight savings time all the time or whether you're going to standard time all the time. I don't want to get there unless Brian wants to get there legally. That's all I have.
Okay, thank you. No other bill discussion, no other direction needed?
Not at this time.
I, I actually watched the hearing on the daylight savings bill and have just a little bit of clarity on that.
Sure.
County Manager Osborne is correct. The way that it's set with the federal government is that states can opt out of daylight savings of their own accord. They can opt for permanent daylight savings without federal approval. In my mind, the workaround would be going to standard time in the mountain time zone, which I believe is what Arizona does. And that puts them an hour ahead, but, but without being on daylight savings time. I don't think that was discussed at all. But one amendment that was discussed and several amendments have been submitted, the sponsor of the bill is open to changing the effective date to January 1 of next year so that we would finish how, instead of switching back July 1, which is what's written in the bill right now. back July 1, which is what's written in the bill right now. So we would go on to daylight savings this weekend and go off on July 1 if the bill passes. She says she'd be willing to just let us finish out daylight savings the way it is, and then basically we'd never go back on to it if the bill passed.
Thank you for that, Vice Chairman.
Hello, Will Adler for the record and Silver State Group Relations. Chair Mitchell is correct, there was plenty of discussion that the bill could be amended to sort of make it get done at least, or however to do it, do it. So standard time seems to be the way that a state can opt into a time and just stay there. I don't think we can opt forward into mountain time because there isn't a handy time zone ahead of us, unless we did Hawaii's time, maybe, I guess. But I do think the way to forward is to just not keep moving the clock, is to stay to standard time. But technically, the FAA has to confirm a state's time zone because all planes have to know what time zone a state is in for continual air traffic between states. You have to know the time leaving and the time arrival. So there's some check-in due to flight schedules, that is why there's a federal approval of that. So there you go.
All right, thank you.
Remember when telling time was easy?
Anything else?
Remember when telling time was easy?
The government got involved, so go ahead.
I don't have anything. Austin Osborne for the record, I'm happy to summarize everything and ask if you'd like to motion to approve everything incorporated therein type of a thing and to make sure that we're aligned with what this board would like to do on this.
Let's do that.
Okay. Senate Bill 69, we're going to continue obviously supporting our own bill. We're going to discuss with GOED and taxation and other state agencies about those elements we discussed today, and we're going to hold firm on the other elements that we discussed today.
Okay.
AB 77, the Governor's Office of Economic Development, the abatement bill, we're going to continue to, at this point, monitor and engage in that, but not take a position at this time, if I'm hearing that right. And AB 32, VNT Railway, we will continue to support that and let Commissioner Mitchell continue to take that lead as he's the representative of this board. On the veterans' bill, continue to monitor. Public records request ombudsman, monitor. Rail study for North and South, monitor. And note that's AB 256. Sign language and ADA matters, we're continuing to monitor. Daylight savings time, monitor. And then this board will take then, supporting all NACO bills, Nevada Association of Counties, unless brought to this board otherwise for a different position. And then AB 242, sagebrush ecosystem, continue to monitor, potentially oppose working in collaboration with the Fire District as related to fuels reduction programs.
Okay.
Let me make sure I covered everything.
Everything covered on my list.
Okay. And yes, that's all I have.
Okay. Commissioner Gilman, do you have anything to add at this time?
I do not, thank you.
Okay, Vice Chairman, do you have anything to add at this time?
Just one bill that I'm hoping that my fellow commissioners will indulge, potentially putting on the radar for staff to monitor and potentially support in the future, and that's AB 33, which is the state-controlled bill to create an office of inspector general, which is fairly common in other states, but you just brought that forward. The best way I can summarize it is, it would be like about a doosh, if you will, maybe not quite as disruptive, hopefully, but a way to look for ways to broaden use and that kind of thing. And then the last thing that was on my mind was just instruction as well to monitor and kind of default support whatever position our other county elected officials take on bills unless they specifically ask us to weigh in or we have specific concerns about something. Otherwise, our default position would be just support whatever position they take.
Okay.
And may I note, Mr. Chairman, Austin Osborne for the record, that our elected officials are aware, and for Commissioner Mitchell, that they can participate in these meetings and discussions at any time they want, and we do discuss generally things of interest that they would like our assistance on.
Okay.
And I made note of Commissioner Mitchell's items here and ask if the board would incorporate those also into its motion if it desires.
All right. Is there any public comment? All right. Vice Chairman, are you prepared to make a motion?
Yes, I am. Commissioner Mitchell moved to direct county staff and lobbyists to represent Story County on known BDRs bills and other potential legislation affecting Story County as discussed on the record in our meeting today.
Second. Motion in a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Motion passes unanimously. Thank you, Will. Thank you, Austin. Thank you, Clay. Moving on to item number 30, discussion for possible action, consideration of possible approval of business license second readings A through N. My fellow commissioners, have any questions regarding those second readings?
None, thank you.
Thank you. Is there any public comment regarding those second readings? All right, not seeing any. Vice Chairman, are you prepared to make a motion?
Yeah, move to approve the secondary business licenses under item 30 listed as A through N.
Second. Motion in a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Motion passes unanimously. Thank you, gentlemen. On to item number 31, this is the second and final time for public comment. Is there any public comment in the courtroom today?
Jim Hindle, Clerk and Treasurer, relative to the opening of vehicle registration window, DMV, I was asked to emphasize the couple of points again, Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, 9 until noon, 1 until 3. It would also be just for Story County and credit card transaction only.
Thank you for that, Jim. All right. Any other public comment? Not seeing any. It gives me great pleasure to announce that we're on item number 32. It is 12:21 PM, and this meeting is adjourned.